Twenty twenty-two, regular meeting of the City of Plainview Nebraska City Council Meeting, Open Meetings Act hosted in the East Wall. Roll call Bob.
Here.
Pam.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Brian.
Here.
Number two, approval of minutes from previous meeting, Monday, November seventh, twenty twenty-two? I'm sorry. I was just wait, sorry. Oh, all rise for the pledge and reg.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, number two, approval of minutes from previous meeting, the regular meeting on Monday, November seventh, twenty twenty-two? Second.
I'll second.
Bob.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Motion carries, number three, claims and payrolls. All in favor, Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Number four, discussion action, approval of twenty dash T F R H dash three five zero two three, drawdown number five, Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District, one thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars fifteen cents, Green Gables Contracting, four thousand five hundred ninety-four dollars and fifty cents.
Well, they're finally getting going up there on the project, so this is just the first, um, this is just an admin fee for Nina and then chippers built from Green Gables for what they've done so far up there.
Twenty dash T F R H dash thirty-five zero twenty-three, drawdown number five? Second?
I'll second.
Second, all in favor, Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Okay. Council President Smith, any final council comments?
I'd just like to thank you, Vernon, for your years of service with the city.
Appreciate that.
You've done a lot of good things in the last four years that I've been on, so I appreciate your service, Vernon.
I'm a member of the council too. Councilmember Yostin, any final council comments? So I will, once again, uh, relegate like I can follow mirror to the state legislature and ask council president to make a motion to adjourn and sign a die?
I'll make that motion.
Councilmember Yostin?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we adjourn signing die pending the new council. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyway, the city has some plaques for you guys for the appreciation of your services, the city. Just thank you for your service in Dunfords community. You can't sign your own.
I mean, hey, I'm still.
Oh, oh.
Don't forget Pam.
I take that too.
Don't wanna know who you are, you know?
If you sign Brian, you can bring that back. You brought our bags for service. You want a glass of bread?
Yeah, I want one, yeah. Special working with you?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay, alright, thanks.
Absolutely. Thursday or Friday?
It's Friday.
Friday?
Perfect.
I'm just gonna sit out here and, the peanut gallery, take Kareen's spot if that's alright?
As long as you can talk as much as I do.
I cannot guarantee you that at all.
Kareen is the president of the peanut gallery.
Brian?
Well, sure. No, you have to stay in the peanut gallery.
We'll leave your toilet, I'll guard your toilet, I'll be up.
Alright.
Oh, look, when I had my back turned, there you put your name, definitely.
I said the right one?
Yeah.
I looked before I said.
She did it fast.
I'll call this, uh, meeting of the Plainview City Council back to order. Can I say the number five?
Yes, sir.
Number five is oath of office, mayor and councilmembers, Boston, Kareen Genek and Jody Moore.
Can we read it together? Perfect, lovely, thank you.
Please say your own name.
I want to say my own name, okay. Ready?
Alright.
I, Kareen Genek, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Nebraska, against all enemies, foreign, domestic, and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, and I will take this obligation freely and without mental reservation, or for the purpose of evasion, and I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the office of city council, according to law and to the best of my ability. And I do further swear that I do not advocate, nor am I a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence, and that during such time as I am in this position, I will not advocate, nor become a member of any political party or organization that advocates to overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence. So help me God.
Okay, we'll jump right into number six, discussion action, election of president of the council. Alright. So at this point in time, election of the president of the council, we entertain motions to nominate one of you forward to be the president of council.
That had to be somebody that owned him for a while.
What do they want? Second to that?
My second.
Yeah, well, Brian?
Uh.
Tony?
Aye.
Kareen?
Aye.
Okay, well, carries, congratulations.
Yeah, thanks, I didn't know I was gonna get that.
You know, you can come get that job.
I have, I don't have. I don't have a pen though, somebody have an extra.
You may borrow my blue pen if you wanna have it, I will gift it to you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Could've sent you down the mail.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Number seven, discussion action, personnel committee appointments, and we actually need two people for the personnel committee. So, at this time, I'd like to ask members of the council, if anybody would voluntarily serve on the personnel committee? Do you think the duties are just to review personnel?
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna come up, um, we're gonna be working on our handbook, hopefully this year to revise it and some more policies, so we'll be hopefully trying to get together and work through that, so hopefully somebody wants to pass some time and, yeah.
Maybe conference reverence in, uh, interest if I'm the president. No.
No.
If I work for a she's thing.
I would volunteer to be on that.
Okay.
Like you.
Tyler? You guys okay with that?
Yep.
We need to vote that?
Actually.
Really, actually, a motion on it?
Yes.
Okay, that's why we'd like a motion for Kareen and Tyler to be on the personnel committee.
I'll make that motion.
My second.
Alright, well, Brian?
Aye.
Jody?
Aye.
Kareen?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Number eight, discussion action, mayor appointment for your terms, city administrator Jeremy Tar, city clerk treasurer Courtney Retsloff, chief of police Christie Holler, city attorney Bruce Curtis, and we need to do these separately, that's it. Okay, so we're looking for a motion to appoint Jeremy Tar, city administrator?
I'll make that motion for the city administrator Jeremy Tar.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Alright, vote, Tyler?
Aye.
Kareen?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Okay, looking for a motion to appoint Courtney Retsloff, city clerk treasurer?
Make the motion appoint city clerk treasurer Courtney Retsloff.
Second?
My second.
Your second, okay, vote, Tyler?
Aye.
Kareen?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Okay, looking for a motion to appoint Christie Holler, chief of police?
I'll make the motion appoint chief of police Christie Holler.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Brian, okay, vote, Kareen?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Jody?
Aye.
Alright, and finally, a motion to appoint Bruce Curtis, city attorney?
Motion appoint, uh, city attorney Bruce Curtis.
I'll second.
Second, okay, vote, um, Kareen?
Aye.
Jody?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Number nine, discussion action, employee health insurance renewal effective two month of twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so we're bringing this forward obviously now, we can, um, relook at it here in January, so if we stick with our current plan, we are looking at a negative four percent for cost. If we wanna look elsewhere, we can, we did the surveys last year, um, and chose what we had this year, uh, so we're here obviously a month ahead. If we wanna look somewhere else to do surveys, we can, uh, they suggested that we, obviously, put our gap of negative four percent increase, but, um, if you do wanna look elsewhere, try something else, we can, otherwise, we'll, we'll re-present this in January with our current health care just staying the same. So explain to you guys what you guys wanna do.
Are you happy with it?
I think for the most part, yep, yep, um, next year, he said we can do, we can do surveys and go look out elsewhere and really dive into it next year. He said every year's kind of, kind of a pain to redo all the surveys and everything, so next year, we can get a good start on it and go through the motions again. And then, and then our new copy Andrew will be on our insurance and all that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was quite a surprise, would you budget fifteen percent?
Yeah, yeah, we didn't know.
Increase that came in negative four, so it's, it's pretty awesome.
Yeah.
And, and you guys got one that you're happy with? I mean, so it's hard to argue.
Yeah, we can look at it again next year.
Mm-hmm, and we'll have more information in January, we just didn't have all compiled for tonight, so.
Yeah, but, yeah, so I guess really, if, if you're happy with that, we'll just present that in January, or if you really wanna do a deep dive in something, we sure can, so.
Alright.
See you in January.
Over in January.
Yep, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, reports, manor, anybody here from the manor? Nobody here from the manor? Police chief.
Alright, been a pretty busy month. Um, we've got the numbers in front of you, any questions, just feel free to ask. Um, I will tell you there's a congratulations in order, Andrew tested yesterday in the academy for the physical exam, and they accepted him and made him an offer to go January thurs, when he'll start, so.
Yay.
He's done what he's been asked to do as far as getting physically in shape for this, so, um, something else I wanna bring up too, you guys have heard that we're possibly, well, we are going to state radios, right? Have you guys heard that, anything about that? So the county has, um, picked up the cost of that for Plainview, for Pierce P D, for Osmond, and then, um, the sheriff's department, it's about one point two million dollars that they are going to cover for state radios for us to have. Um, I'll be getting some numbers, we have another meeting, I think, I think it's in February, regarding, there's gonna be some monthly costs that are incurred with that, just for upkeep for the radios. I don't have that hard number because I'm not gonna start installing, I think until January, February, we get some equipment, probably won't be up and running until two thousand twenty-four. I will have more, more of a dollar figure for you before the budget year of next year, so. It's not astronomical, astronomical, so I'm not gonna have to pay a whole lot of money for it, something that we do need, 'cause right now I don't carry a radio. Um, I'll be, like I said, I'll, I'll give you more paperwork and documentation on that after our next meeting, so. That's all that I have, if anybody has any questions?
I do have a question, um, I see it's not on here, but are we looking at speed limit signs?
Yes.
On West Street and some of the other places?
Really, the only one we need is Southwest Street, right before, you know, like right at the.
Right at the, um, city limits, okay.
Yeah, I didn't think about that when we took the si, the stop signs down, that people don't understand that you have to reduce to twenty-five. I pulled a couple people over.
Yes.
It's hard to ride a ticket if they can't, I mean, they should know that when you're at city limits, it's twenty-five miles per hour unless otherwise posted. I really got nothing, so, I don't know why it's not on here, I thought I had made mention that it was gonna be, put on here and then resolution be done, but yes, it's gonna be twenty-five mile per hour speed limit sign, where, uh, is that shape for gr, that old green?
Yeah.
Right there, so, okay. It's been pretty, pretty good so far though, so.
I'd like to see how that works when we get it up, and then if it's not working, revisit the stop signs situation.
Um, stop signs, but stop signs are not meant, and I'll, and I'll say this till I'm blue in the face, stop signs are not meant as a regulation for speed limit.
No.
We are.
Right.
So we will, with Andrew coming out, we'll be able to monitor that just a little bit more.
Okay.
However, again, I've only pulled one person over since they've come down.
Okay.
I mean, it's no different than what it was when the stop signs were up there.
Right, they just slowed down.
Because it had to stop, and I mean, it's not, again, I can't reiterate enough that it's not, a stop sign is not meant for speed control.
Right.
It's not, so, I, I think it would be, I think it would be a bad idea to put stop signs back up there, especially with the congestion with, when they're coming out of your apartment lot. You know, they come off the locusts just as fast as they do coming off the thirteen and twenties.
We get that on the agenda for next month.
I just wanna say the public appreciates you as tending to when events calls are done, so they're, they do notice that you're out and about and they do appreciate your work.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Anything else, anybody? Hello? Welcome, do you want someone else? Alright, so, um, just gonna quickly kinda go over what our focus is gonna be going into twenty twenty-three. Um, and I wanna say thank you to Bob, um, he called and wanted to set a meeting and kinda talk about future goals, so, um, that corrective approach was really appreciated. Um, and just want you guys to know if you have any ideas other than what we're focusing on, that you can always call, or you know, text. Um, on the city side, we're gonna obviously focus on finishing up the D T R, the construction activities. Uh, but there's also revitalization activities that could go along with that as well. Um, we're obviously getting into that fourth town home project, um, the community building, the capital campaign is really kicking off, so we'll be doing a big kickoff in January. Um, there are some significant donors, um, involved at this point, where we're gonna be looking at doing some matching campaigns, and then trying to leverage that with some grant funding, so we'll be seeing a lot about that coming up in Nov, in January. Um, the Co-Share Network Building, we are still working with, um, Invest Nebraska on that project, and creating one here in Pierce, and then partnering with the one in Norfolk, Lincoln, and Omaha. Um, and then, the other big thing, obviously, more housing, um, subdivision development and business development, you'll probably see us focus a little bit more this year, um, through Plainview Economic Development on providing courses and classes for our business owners, partnering with the Center for Roll Affairs, which is something that we did a few years ago, and we're gonna be bringing that back. Um, there's about five or six classes that we're gonna kick off for next year, so, uh, participation would be great, those are offered to, to the businesses for free. Um, on the county side of it, since the last project that we did for you included that updated R P I C, that Compton Strat Plan, um, the next step is to update our housing plan, and that's a countywide thing, but each individual community is represented in that housing plan. Um, the last time this was done was in twenty seventeen, and the county paid for ten thousand dollars of it, and, um, Plainview and Pierce also combined paid ten thousand dollars, and then there was a NICA grant for twenty thousand dollars. They're not cheap, but what's, the D E D has now done is they've created a toolkit, if you've got updated Compton Strat plans and some good data, um, you can try to do it yourself, and that's what we're gonna do this year, we're gonna try to save everybody some money, and do it in-house, because all of the communities have those updated plans, all the communities went through E cap, so we have a significant amount of information, um, that we feel that we can put together a pretty good plan for you guys, so we're gonna be working on that throughout the year, um, and it's probably gonna take six to eight months. Um, those things help you become eligible for, uh, grants, and they're also the things that developers look at, because if they wanna come into a community, they wanna see your housing plan, and they wanna know what you've included. One thing that was not included in the twenty seventeen plan that you need is a tip, a tip option. Um, developers wanna see that, and when you don't have that, you won't be eligible for certain grants, which also won't be attracting those developers. So we're gonna be adding a tip component, um, to the housing study, and you and Pierce are probably the two communities that'll maximize the most on that, but we'll be doing that for you. And then the other thing that we're gonna be focusing on, um, for you guys is daycare, uh, countywide daycare initiative. Um, gave us to Kareen and Jody already, so give us to you.
Thank you.
Um. So, I'm part of the Nebraska Leadership Policy Academy this year, and our focus is early childhood, early childhood education and daycare. There's no doubt that there's a shortage of that across Nebraska, but especially in Pierce County. Um, P C D actually made it a strategy last year to focus on daycares for this year, and we have five daycares open in the county this year, but, um, a lot of those, those were all in-home daycares, and then we've got one center for sale. So we need to look at the models that are gonna work, and the reality is to make it work, it's gonna take the cities, the schools, and the major employers working together. So that is our first initial kickoff conversation, we partnered with First Five Nebraska, which is a child advocacy, advocacy group, and we partnered with C four K and the Buffett Foundation. Mike Keating is the president of First Five, he's gonna be coming. Um, we are not gonna talk about problems, because we know there's a shortage, everybody relies on somebody who needs reliable daycare and they don't have it. Um, so we're gonna be focusing on solutions, what are the barriers? Um, it's gonna cost money, not gonna lie, the end solution is gonna cost money, but what does it look like? And so, luckily for us, there are examples all across the state of public-private partnerships, or schools, or churches, or any number of groups that have come together to make it happen. Um, so it is an open conversation, it, it is concentrated to just that group of people, so the, the general public is not, um, participating in this one. There, there will be other groups for them to participate in, but this is just for what we call the power investors, and that would be you guys. Um, and all of the communities, all the school boards, um, and all the major employers in this county are invited to that meeting on the twenty-fifth. It's here at Plainview, here at the library, so we do hope that you can attend, um, P C D will be providing you snacks, so we'll feed you a little bit. We're gonna try to get in and out in an hour, hour and a half at the very most, but, um, it is, uh, we need to start that conversation. Um, so, we hope you participate in that, so, those are kind of our goals and our focuses for this year. Do you guys have any questions, or anything you wanna ask me about? Nothing, okay, and then on the grant side, um, we were pretty light this year, for the Housing and the Park Project, we got a hundred fourteen thousand, uh, but we will be working with all the fire departments in the county on emergency radios, that's a one point four million dollar grant, so the Plainview Fire Department is included in that, um, the grant application list is up in January, Pierce Fire Department is kind of the ringleader for, you know, kinda spearheading that project, but, um, I'm the grant writer on that, so if there's a question or concern or something you want us to include there, let us know. But, um, that is one of the big grant projects that we're working for you guys this year, and then, six to seven million dollars in grants for that community building is what we're looking at target for the next year, so, live grant ready? I don't know, my god.
I thought you were gonna write for eleven million for that county, for that community building.
The building is projected to cost eleven million, and you have to raise three or four million, twenty-five to thirty percent of it, then you can leverage the rest with grants. So I'm really looking at six to seven million to raise.
Ooh, I get that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Uh, city superintendent, Bob? We're all looking at it here, Jeremy.
Oh, yeah, one thing I have to add is they are currently working on the Wyzeth well for that well renovation, so they have both wells got in, there's clay layer in there, and they're gonna be pumping in and out, try testing the different nitrates, so that's good progress.
I'd just like to thank you guys for your prompt snow removal, good job. Last time we were understaffed, so Jeremy was in the snow pile, so, you see any mailboxes, Brian?
Curbs, mailboxes.
He was close to mine, I don't know.
Anyhow, thanks Jeremy for your help. Okay, city attorney, any comments, Chris?
Well, we got a couple things to mention other than agenda items. We've been working on the finishing of the acquisition of the property for the foundation of the community building, and material went down to them last week, so that we were clear on timing and city waiting period. And I sent her a deed and a couple other things with suggestions, they go ahead and write their own language about, hold them harmless for the paving assessments, 'cause I knew they were nervous about that, and the lease, and they were nervous about that. And now, Norda has indicated to Kathy Rocky, she's particularly nervous about, well, this is for the foundation, it's not just for Plainview, it's for the foundation and the building. Well, she sent up a draft of a deed today that had some language in it, that said we would convey the property to the foundation, and of course, that cannot happen, because Susan has explained, and we've all talked about, it has to be owned by the city to make the grants work and so on. So I wrote back, I turned it around in about an hour, I mean, we're trying to get this done, and sent it back to her, and suggested some language that said, for the use and benefit of the foundation, but the city will. Didn't get a reply back, but that was at three thirty, they didn't send it until two thirty. So hopefully, we'll hear tomorrow and make that work, I also got the issue of Norda's A D N, we have a blizzard coming, and I was trying to put together a plan to get this all done.
She's ninety, bro.
Okay, ninety. Well, there's other issues along that line, but she'll be talking with Kathy Rocky, and hopefully Kathy can impress upon her that this title issue has to be the way it was presented, you can't say we're going to convey the property to the foundation. Um, we've got a little preparation to do for the special use permit hearing coming up next week, we'll be working on that. And I, we've got a meeting set with Mark Fitzgerald tomorrow to talk a little bit about that, and a little bit about a request for production that Susan received, they're asking for more copies of correspondence and so on. And some of that is privileged and some of it is not, and they wanna argue about every little bit, so we're still talking about that. After we talk with Mark tomorrow, I'll be calling you about that, 'cause we gotta get another answer about what we're doing with this request for production. The request is to Susan, as the county economic development director, well, not really a Plainview problem, but she has allowed us some input, and we'll talk about it, so. But in fact, tomorrow, we'll have a little progress on both those counts, and then hopefully have a reasonably well organized plan of procedure for the special use permit here. We'll have to have a little outline as to how it's gonna go with you. That's all I've got separately.
Okay, Bruce, if it helps with Norda, um, the Nebraska Community Foundation does not allow their affiliated funds to own property. We are literally not allowed to, and we can produce the documents that say so.
And I told her, you know, this is the requirement for this property and this foundation deal, talk to Jeremy, talk to Jim Carles, or talk to you.
Right.
If they don't buy it, that I told her, but, uh.
Right.
I think that'll get it done, I would think Kathy would understand the technical requirement. And you just can't do the deed with the restriction of the deed conveyed to the foundation, and.
Right.
Okay, thanks, Bruce. Number one, the discussion action, mayor appointments. Um, board, Krista Hanks, tree board, Brent Muller, park board, Lynn Steck, housing board, Gene Thompson, Tracy Holber, and the handyman board, I've not, uh, filled that one yet, but I do want the council to know that I really did call these people, and they really did agree to keep serving on the boards. I didn't just say that. They all agreed to read up, and there's still three board positions open, the housing board, the pool board, and the handyman board, which I have not filled. And Jeremy and I have been chatting to, and we're gonna go through all the boards, and see what they're supposed to do, what they have been doing, what they should be, see if we actually need all we have, or we can combine some, or, you know, maybe we keep it status quo, but Jeremy and I are gonna be reviewing all the boards too, probably go ahead by next month and fill these three positions, and we'll go from there, so, we have to do these separately.
You should go do a slate.
Get a slate if you want.
If everybody agrees, you can do a slate though.
Yeah, so do I have a motion to approve all of the mayor appointments for the various boards?
Make the motion, approve the boards?
Second.
One second, a motion.
All right, Brian?
Aye.
Tody?
Yes.
Crean?
Yes.
And Tyler?
Aye.
Number twelve, discussion action appointment of city engineer and city street superintendent. City engineer is Miller Associates and the city street superintendent is Reed Miller. So I guess this is pretty much just a formality, isn't it?
Yeah, you have to appoint one every year and then they make sure you do that so you can get your highway allocation hanging every year. It's not the meeting minutes, so then we can't hit our can't hit our fundings, so.
Yeah, a couple years ago we went through and we had them present the different engineers and you guys elected Millers. Uh if you guys ever feel like you wanna go a different direction, you can look elsewhere, but so far, like I said, Millers has done really well with the water project and everything, Chris is really impressive, so.
Any discussion from the council? Totally have a motion to uh appoint Miller Associates as city engineer?
Got motion.
I'll say I got motion.
All right. Uh Brian?
Aye.
Tody?
Aye.
Tody?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
All right. And we need a motion for city street superintendent, Reed Miller.
I'll make that motion for Reed Miller, city superintendent.
I'll say I heard him.
All right. Tyler?
Aye.
Creed?
Aye.
Tody?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Number thirteen, discussion action approval of city of Plainview handyman title six program.
So you wanna read through all this and?
I do.
You did?
I did.
So we have to do this just to update it, um since we're federally funded for the handyman, um we have to have a title six non-discrimination plan in place. Um it has to be accessible to the public, so it'll be on the website once you guys approve it. The handyman board did look at this and they did give it, they're okay with that. This comes right from the uh Nebraska Public Transit, they sent this to me, I didn't change anything in here, this is their language on all of this. So if you have any questions, let me know, but that's basically what that is. Um if somebody has a complaint against any handyman, they're welcome to make a complaint, if they feel the services were not adequate or they're discriminated against. But um once this is done, then it'll be updated and put on the website and the forms will be out there for people to use if they need to.
Forms for complaint.
Yes.
Any more discussion? Looking for a motion to approval of city of Plainview handyman?
I'm gonna make that motion.
Second.
I'll say I got motion.
All right, Tyler?
Aye.
Creed?
Aye.
Tody?
Aye.
All right. Number fourteen, discussion action resolutions number six sixty, sale of surplus equipment on Big Irons.
We just did this up to the legislature room, but here's a graph. Jeremy had emailed me with the list. We did the same resolution format a year ago and with Big Iron and it worked fine, I think. So this just says public public sale, public auction, internet site listing if possible. It leaves it to Jeremy to pick one, but I think he's setting his intention at Big Irons, probably. Those are the five items he gave me, the description of the bin numbers.
The only one we didn't talk about last time, and that's 'cause I forgot about it, is the number five Buick Park Avenue, that is something that the police towed.
Gosh, was it a year ago, a year and a half ago, something like that?
And it's been sitting sitting over by railroad tracks and she has the title written for it, so we we have rights to it, she said, I think, so.
Finally got the title. Yeah.
Uh just need to get rid of it as well, so that's the only one I didn't tell you about last time, so.
So just so everyone knows, it's a case back over, Johnson Street Street, Chevrolet Tahoe, International Semi Truck, and then the Buick Park Avenue. That's all excess city equipment selling for surplus, just to get rid of and get a little money for it. It went really well last time, too, and stuff, too. Okay, so looking for a motion to approve resolution six sixty?
I'll make a motion to approve that resolution six sixty.
Second?
Second.
All right, Corinne?
Aye.
Tyler? Tody?
Hi.
Brian?
Aye.
And number fifteen, discussion action resolution number six six one, update signature authority on municipal accounts.
So.
Corinne had that in her package.
Yep, um I just went through, we see news now because Bob will be on the general account as a signature authority and I just put all the accounts on there, so there this bank has an updated list. Um didn't change anything, it'll just have Bob's signature on there instead of Brian, so that's the only thing we're changing.
My mayor's office official, 'cause they have their own rivers team, yes.
And then when it was a river.
We're in Braxton.
Who brought you here?
Oh yeah, why'd you clarify? Why'd you have to say that?
I just have one question, so say you and Melissa went somewhere together and got in a wreck, heaven forbid. Because Bob's on the general account, is he, would he be able to sign on any of those other accounts?
No, he's not, he's not a signature authority on them right now. So if that happened, you guys would have to pass a resolution authorizing that he could sign on those accounts.
Well, don't get in a wreck.
Don't ride together.
Don't go together.
You take your private jet, she'll take yours.
In an emergency, we can do that on forty-eight hours notice, you don't have to spend a lot of time setting up a meeting or something and you can be done and have it to them.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, so looking for a motion for approval of resolution six six one?
Motion to approve six six one?
Second?
Second.
All right.
Aye.
Tody?
Aye.
Creed?
Aye.
Tyler? Number seventeen, discussion action maintenance of flags and flag poles. Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Uh sixteen, discussion action changes to no parking on Woodland Avenue north of Masonic Temple.
My understanding, more discussion than action, but this is what a forum would look like, just to give you uh an idea of the forum. What you wanna do is while you're here tonight.
Yeah, I think this was brought up last night from the Sonic Lodge and they just like to start discussion on it. Um we didn't plan on any action tonight or anything. Um there's different options floating around there, essentially they'd like to be able to park there at night when they have their meetings and everything. So I guess, well, you're part of the Sonic Lodge, so.
Eastern star.
Eastern, I apologize.
She's a woman, they're men.
So right now, that's where we put that pedestrian walkway in, what, five, five years ago, maybe?
Just painted on the street.
It's just painted on the street, there's no parking there at all, ever. Um I mean, I don't know if they wanna propose, like, I know during school it'd probably be nice not to have parking there, just because that road does get kinda congested. Um but maybe like after four, it would be open for parking, like from four to like maybe seven the next morning. I mean, that's kind of up to you guys, what you wanna do, but that would help the school too, if they had activities going on. Um you know, just kind of to free up that that area for people to park, 'cause it does get pretty tight for parking around there when there's stuff going on at the school. And if there's stuff going on at the Masonic Lodge, it does get a little bit short on parking, so. Um nothing that needs to be decided, if there's anybody from the public that would have any concerns or something they would want to do differently, they're more than welcome to come in and talk to us and we can discuss that as well, but.
If I may add something?
Yep.
I also think that the highway sidewalk is not such a good idea when they're taking the kids from the school to the library. I know, it's like herding cats, when you got a bunch of little kids trying to keep them in that yellow line. When I've done traffic control up there, they don't always stay in the yellow line.
Yeah.
So in the future, if there could ever be a sidewalk put in there on that that by the Masonic Lodge and the house, it'd be super fantastic.
Gonna bring that up, not everyone was here when that discussion was had, but there was a significant discussion of a sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
And the Masonic Lodge was okay with putting it along that curb. And Walt Frederick was not crazy about it, but it wouldn't hurting any. Uh the cost would be an issue, of course, it's not hardly fair to make Walt pay for a sidewalk to the library. And I don't think the Masonic Lodge would be too crazy about it, but if the city wanted to put in a sidewalk, certainly no problem, that'd be the safest by far. Get them off the street, if you're concerned about that.
Jeremy and I have talked about that and Jeremy mentioned putting a sidewalk in right by the curb of the street. And make it wide enough, so the school can get their skid loader down it. If we can talk the school into cleaning the snow off.
Gail said that would not be a problem.
So see, if we can, we'll just get some money for the sidewalk and get it done.
I thought the big issue was the homeowner there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember that meeting, it was.
That's a valid point, but you know, kid's safety is worth a lot of, worth a lot of.
Yeah.
I got a couple young boys that can also scoop their snow, if that's a problem on Frederick's property there.
So yeah, Jeremy and I have been talking about that.
Walt would cooperate, but he has a driveway that enters that way.
Yeah.
But it would not be rocket science, he could get that so quick, so the sidewalk would just merge into your driveway and it wouldn't be a problem.
So we'll we'll talk more, we'll get it done.
Why do I think that there is something against not, you can't have a sidewalk next to the curb, that it has to be?
Well, it's on, that's on city right of way, if it's next to the curb, if it's a private sidewalk, but if the city wanted to install it there, I think we could.
So state can do whatever they want.
Do best.
Well, it's on, it's on city right of, you know, the city right of way generally extends six feet up above the curb or something like that.
Yeah.
So probably shouldn't build on there, but the city could pave an area for public use if you wanted to.
So maybe tell Walt that city property, not his, he won't feel so bad.
Yeah.
I don't love that, but we'll discuss it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get some work done on revisiting.
Yeah. So we're looking for some direction somebody were doing.
The second thing I remember besides the slope was the fact that the underground sprinklers are concerned about it.
Yeah, I know the death penalty moved.
Yeah.
That's some of the two things I remember that will be negative, you know.
Yeah, I would assume if we do that, we even look, we'd have to obviously grant the construction stuff, we'd probably look at putting a path through the library too as well, I would assume, but. 'Cause right now they're stepping stones, they're about growing in, so.
Yeah. I think it beats a long angle anyway.
A lot of what feet.
Yeah.
I just think the safety of those little kids, I see it, it's like, oh my gosh, that's horrible.
And it gets a lot of use, a lot of kids walk down that street sometimes, isn't it?
It is, and it's Mrs. Braemer, you know, who's walking them, is Mrs. Braemer walks them, and I don't think she can catch a little one, no offense to her. But they do, they take off, they're all like herding cats, so that's something to consider too.
It's dammed, yeah.
Go ahead.
At least you know some direction, thank you.
Yeah, number seventeen, discussion action, maintenance of flags and flag poles added to twelve seven of twenty-two. To answer to your question, Billy Ray, when you came in about who, how'd this get back on the agenda? Um Jeremy contacted me as the incoming mayor and we got, Jeremy talked about it, he felt it should be on the agenda and it should be decided by this council right here. Your city representative, so that's how it got back on the agenda, which is a good thing, right?
Yes, very good thing.
So I mean, we decided that, you know, it's a thing that should be decided by the council.
I appreciate that very much.
Yes, and so everyone in their pack had got a map. Any questions about what we're looking at as far as flags? And then Bruce, do you, do you have a legal comment on flags about the the flag code?
Well, I, I got to Christie and brought up for discussion, you know, that there's a US code provision about flags, but it just talks in terms of recommended and customary. Uh the the most definitive thing I could find, I was looking to see if there was any hard law. The American Legion has a a fairly specific statement on what they feel is adequate for flag illumination. And they recommend direct illumination if possible, but their standard is adequate that the flag can be recognized as such by a casual observer. That's kind of a quote from the American Legion stuff, if I remember it. But also, in a general sense, if you can see that it's an American flag with the lighting that's available, uh that's good enough, although it's not the best. And they would like direct lighting, if it can be had, it's a little more formal and looks nice. Uh but uh direct lighting is not a requirement by any entity or law that I can find. Well, that that's the the overall picture is, and it's very much a discretionary thing, is what is enough lighting? I mean, I've had the same issue, we've got five flags down the front of a condo building up at the river. And there's a streetlight down there and it kinda lights the whole front of the building and hmm, we hope that that's adequate. You know, there's there's a lot of places that that's the case, the lights are not all direct spotlights. And you went around and had some comments on the various sites, I think.
Yeah, Jeremy threw that up. So I guess what what I'm getting from what you're saying is there's no hard laws, 'cause we're in the flag, if we did not do it, no one could come and sue us for not doing it, is that?
No, it's just not observing.
I know it's recommended.
Customary recommended, you like so many things about flags, but uh as long as they're displayed and you can see that it's an American flag. Hmm that's enough, although it's not optimal.
Hey, Billy Ray?
It was a US code passed by the US Senate, was it not, that says proper illumination?
That's what it says, but it doesn't define it.
But they, no, they they don't define it any better than that, and they leave no consequences if you don't follow. So it's a US code that's unenforceable. But we all know what's spraying, what's wrong. I spoke with the city administrator about lighting in the flags. They said that they take care of it. The city has purchased two totally inadequate, in my opinion, solar lights, placed them on the flag poles at the Welcome to Plainview East End of town. They said that they weren't lighting up very well, and I invite you to please take a look at the one east of town. The reflectors on the highway are brighter in your headlights than that solar.
Can I interrupt you for one second?
Yes, sir.
East town, um we are going to get a a better solar light on that.
You know, if you go home with the solar panels, solar panels are facing north.
Well, it it's coming up, they're they're good, yeah. On west of town, that flag is coming out. Because of the fire station three pole flags, one of them's gonna be an American flag and the American flag has to be the highest flag of any group flags, and it's gonna be on one of that middle pole.
Yeah, that's what I was told, I was told y'all gonna take out the pole west of town.
So therefore, we're not gonna have a tall American flag on a tall pole and another American flag on the lower pole. The lower pole American flag is coming out, as soon as the others are up and light.
It's not being flown by the city, so what difference does it make, it's two separate locations.
Oh, we don't need two American.
Don't need two American flags flying in and around. Somebody else is gonna fly an American flag down the street, so the city doesn't think that they need to fly their American flag.
As long as it's illuminated, there's no reason for it.
I was told that the flag pole in the city park is planned to be taken down.
Yeah, I think that's true.
Well, I was between, I asked Corinne, it's a veterans', it's a legion flag, at the time, we didn't know, 'cause it was in.
Transition.
Transition, yeah, so that is a legion flag.
But that one is visible from the streetlights.
There used to be, and there is, a light that's on the street lamp pole there.
Yep.
And I was told that since the NYPD folks took over the electricity, that that's their responsibility. But it's not their responsibility to light the city's flag. And nobody called it maniac.
But that one is.
I called them and they said that that light needs to be replaced and they would be glad to put up a new light.
The one across from uh by the crosswalk is visible from the streetlight, as well as the ones outside the city office and the police station. You can drive by and see the city flag, which is what the code says, honestly, it is.
Well, the code, the flag code, the flag code says properly illuminated, and that and that led to interpretation, and if you believe that's properly illuminated, uh then that's your opinion. I don't believe that the, they tell me that the flag pole at the city office is also coming down.
It's very visible from the streetlight, both of them there are.
I don't believe that they are.
They are, I just drove by there before it came down.
I don't believe that that's very visible, I don't believe that most specific illumination is proper illumination.
That's part of the code, if we, anyhow, you got any more else, I mean, anything else?
The flag that's flown on the city property at the baseball field flew all summer in the dark. They tell me that that is the ball backers' responsibility. That flag flown.
Still city property, though.
On the city property. Flown all night in the dark. I asked, uh, what public good does it serve to take down our flags and our poles? And I was asked, what public good does it serve to keep them up?
Okay, anybody from the council?
Will.
I'd be the first one to say that I think there always should be a ceremony to raise and lower the flag before and after any ball game. And that might be our responsibility, 'cause we're not teaching our children that they should do that, might just be a downfall on us and something we need to look at.
Well, the least, the least probably light the flag so that it gets lit and it doesn't have to fly all night in the dark.
Well, if it's taken down like it's supposed to be, it wouldn't be up at night then. Well, if it's taken down like it's supposed to be, it wouldn't be up at night then, it should take it down after the ballgame.
The city won't take them down and put them up because they said it, what was it you said to me, they, you said, don't have time.
Well, that should be up to the ball, ball backers.
No, that one in particular, but the flag east of town flies all night in the dark, you can't tell me that, you think that one's properly lit?
How many?
How many flags do we have, how many flags do we have flying right now on flag poles in the city?
Is there not red power, that east one at all?
No.
No, there's not.
They hung a solar light on it.
Yeah.
And put the solar panel facing north, same way they did the one west.
Christie, there's five.
Five total, okay.
Well, there, yeah, anyhow, the, the east one is gonna be taken care of. That's our welcome to the city.
Billy, I think the council appreciates your concern and your comments, but you have to understand, you're entitled to your personal opinion. But in a discretionary matter, the action of the council runs the city. And it is a discretionary matter, they have to decide how best they want to take care of this situation. And that decision is left in the hands of the council, we all have to acknowledge that, they're the ones in charge. And you have to acknowledge it too.
That's why we're here, that's why we're talking about it.
That's, they're. You always told me, can't fight, can't fight city hall, you gotta burn it down.
Well, you wanna be cautious what you say along those lines, but the city has to decide this policy matter.
They say they won't take care of that flag east of town.
It will be guaranteed.
That's what I got told last time, and ain't nobody done nothing about it, and.
How long ago was that?
Month. And, and, and nobody's done anything about it, I mean, the solar panels are facing north.
There's, there's the clouds and stuff, there's days that won't work anyway.
Well.
But we do have to figure out a way to put a bigger battery pack in there, better solar lights, which we could have done.
There's a fella over in Randolph that says that he will buy. Piece of lighting and we could come up with folks that'll donate the money to come up with proper lighting for your flags.
Our flags, our flags.
Our flags.
There we go.
Seth, you remember?
Seth Noble.
Seth Noble from over Randolph said that he will help fund and he will install the lights for the flags.
Well, why don't you have him get in touch with Jeremy?
Lives in Plainview now.
He's gonna touch with Jeremy.
Seth lives in Plainview now, and he'll come up, he's a veteran. Yeah, if somebody wants to give us money to do that, we're not gonna say no, send them here. We'll talk to him.
But you wouldn't spend a dime of money on your own to do it.
I don't think he's ever come up before, so thank you for bringing that to our attention and we'll deal with it.
That's something we can decide, that's why we're here. That's what the council can.
Well, I'd appreciate if you considered putting some money towards it.
Yeah, I mean, I won't take it right here and right now.
Cause in my opinion.
Do you have, do you have quotes or anything?
Nope.
Well, we gotta do the proper, proper steps and then we will.
I appreciate that, in my opinion, city of Plainview is absolutely disrespected an American flag. American veterans and the country herself.
As a veteran of the United States Army, I would just like to point out that I agree that these flags need to be illuminated a little better. But we have to take the proper steps to make that happen.
Well, that's why I came, and that's why I wanted this subject spoken about, when I wanted this subject spoken about originally, I got told not.
Okay, well, we're, we've changed that, Bob's going to make sure that we get it taken care of, us as a council will make sure that we discussed it. We'll get some quotes and we'll meet about it at the next meeting, does that sound appropriate to everyone?
Billy, this is a new administration, let's start from today.
I appreciate that.
Yep.
And, and, and we, and I as a citizen really appreciate.
The entire administration is.
Take it down until it's fixed.
Some of these folks, knew this was a problem and had known it from the beginning.
So then it's that long regard, I mean.
Thank you.
Short of taking it, putting it up and taking it down, morning and night, it needs to be removed until it's properly discussed and taken care of.
Bruce, I think you didn't kind of vote on it.
Well, I would think you could just as well get it on the record with the vote to move forward with the plans discussed and bring it up at the next meeting, something to that effect.
The flag that you were talking about that need, that needed to be removed, needs to be removed properly, folded properly, we have to have the people that, as a veteran of the United States Air Force.
And I agree with Crean, we need to instruct our.
I, we have to do it the proper way.
We need to teach our youth how to put it up and take it down at the ballfield.
Yep.
So that it is done, when they have games, it can be put up, and when they are done, it can be properly taken down.
Yes, but what, what ties our hands is, we can't make them. We cannot make them do that, we cannot make the ballbackers do that.
No, we can't, but.
And there's nothing I can do to enforce that.
We can discuss with the ballbackers the correct way that it's done, and if they cannot do it the correct way, then maybe they shouldn't be flying it.
Properly.
That's exactly right there.
Fellas in the VFW, they come and they do the flag raising at the football games.
They do, every game.
That's a legion, but.
Well.
Both legion, fellas.
So, do you have any kind of motion from the council or any action?
Do we just make a motion to table this until next month and get some bids and see what needs to be properly done?
Who do we want to get the bids, do you have any input on that?
Seth.
Well, Seth Noel is in the, in the votes for him.
Seth Noel, that's.
Seth.
I don't wanna volunteer Seth.
Well, we'll talk, oh, we'll talk to Seth, somebody will talk to him.
I can talk to Seth, he was right around the corner.
I, I thought you brought his name up, that's why we were referring to him.
Well, I called and talked to him again just to make sure he was still on board and he said that he was and he's been talking.
Well, and if Seth doesn't maybe wanna do it, maybe he can put us in the direction of someone that he knows that would be able to help us out with it.
I was there when he had the conversation and he said that he would do it, so I can talk to Seth.
Perfect, okay. Anything else? So I make a motion to, uh, table this until next month.
Second.
Uh, Brian.
Hi.
Jody.
Hi.
Crean. Alright, so that's good, council comments, Tyler. Crean, you got any comments?
I haven't talked enough.
Jody, any comments?
No comments.
I just wanna congratulate Crean and Jody and you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Looking forward to it.
Yes, absolutely.
Before you guys go, just real quick, City of Osmond is doing some repairs and that painting. They have a thousand ton of asphalt millings for twelve bucks a ton and you are interested, so. So during last night, they asked you to pass it on.
Is that for just offered Plainview or?
Anybody, um, they, they did one small ad in the local newspaper and got no interest, and I happened to visit the meeting last night for some, you know, I had to present and. Um, I said, well, I can let Plainview know. No, I don't know what you can do, I don't know what you can use with it. It's cheap enough, so.
Got a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion?
I got a motion, on the paper?
Hi.